Township of Parsippany, Tuller Hills Township Council Meeting July 9, 2020. Meeting is called to order by the township clerk at 4:10 PM. The agenda of this special meeting, to the extent known, is as follows. Potential adjustment of the water and sewer rates and personnel matters related to the Finance Department. Formal action may or may not be taken. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on July 6, 2020, where it has remained posted since that date. Copies of this notice was transmitted to the Daily Record on July 6, 2020, and faxed to Star Ledger and various other newspapers and local radio stations on July 6, 2020. At this time, I would like to ask everyone to please stand for the flag to move. Hi, flag allegiance.
It's to fly.
That is the state of the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation. I mean, it isn't visible with liberty, justice. Okay, at this time, I'm going to go into the role for Mr. Carriffi.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Ms. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. DePiero. Mr. DePiero. He may be on mute. Mr. DePiero. Also in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, Business Administrator Keith Kazmark, Township Attorney Jim Lott, Township Clerk McNattan, and CFO Ann Cooney. I have a question at this time. Council President, may I begin? Okay, we are going to go into reports. First, I want to start with Mayor Michael Soriano.
I have no report, clerk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Next, I would like to go into Mr. Business Administrator Keith Kazmark.
Thank you, Colette, and I just want to thank the council members for taking the time this afternoon to address two important questions that we have for us with regard to the rate structure for both our sewer and water utility. In addition to this interview tonight with the CFO candidate that I believe will be the recommendation of the administration, but we wanted the council to have the opportunity to meet the individual before we move forward with that formality. The other thing I just wanted to address with the council, and I want to first apologize to those I have not spoken to. Frank Cahill was faster than I was in getting to you folks today. But as I informed Mayor Soriano yesterday, I've been approached about assuming the administrative responsibilities in Woodland Park by two of my council members. Our 15-year administrator clerk is retiring at the end of the month, and he, the town has gone out and solicited resumes and advertised the position. The council found a suitable candidate for the municipal clerk's position that they have offered the position to. However, they were not comfortable with appointing a clerk slash administrator and therefore asked me to consider assuming those responsibilities. After a lot of thought and twisting and turning, as I told Councilwoman Gragnani, I made the determination to accept their offer. But I just want to say to Mayor Soriano and all five members of the council that I appreciate your faith and your confidence in me in almost these last two years. It's been a pleasure working with you. We may not always have agreed on every particular issue, but I always felt that there was a level of mutual respect and an effort to try to cooperate on some tough issues between myself and all six elected officials here in Parsippany. So I want to, I appreciate the opportunity to have served here. It was certainly an opportunity to take on the responsibilities of a larger municipality with a large population and a vast amount of employees. It's certainly been an experience that I value and appreciate the opportunity to have had. And once the formalities in Woodland Park are set, which I expect to happen on July 22, then I'll formalize with the mayor a formal resignation date. But I am here for transition. I told the mayor whatever he needs as far as trying to help find a successor in addition to any support that he needs in transition. And I could even stay on beyond my resignation date to just facilitate that transition. So that offers to the mayor and also to the members of the council. So that's what I have, Mr. Clerk.
Just as a comment from me, sorry for you going, Keith. I wish you luck on your future endeavors.
I appreciate that, Mike. I really do. And it was, it was a pleasure working with all of you.
Keith.
Yes. Loretta, you're on mute. Go ahead.
There you go.
Okay. As I.
Loretta, before you start, before you. But I just want to remind everyone, please mute if you're not speaking because we're getting a feedback.
Am I on mute now or no?
No, you're not. You're not.
Okay, as I mentioned this afternoon, Keith, Adam and I wish you the very best in your future position.
Thank you, Loretta. Tell Adam we're going to catch a Giants Bears game together.
Yes.
Anybody else from council?
Keith, I just want to echo the same thing. It's, it's, it's been a pleasure working.
Same for, for me, Keith. I enjoyed the time you've spent here, you know, working with us on these many issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, all of you.
Keith, how's your last time? I think that your leadership in cross aisle conversations has been really, we're going to miss it a lot, I think. I will miss that most of all.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul, Janice, and Emily. Appreciate that. Mike, I think you asked me what my final date will be, what my last day will be. I don't have that formalized yet because the ordinance that needed to be introduced in Woodland Park for this to happen was introduced last night, which is why I wanted to be forthcoming with you folks today. It will not be adopted until the 22nd, and there'll be an appointment resolution that accompanies the adoption of the ordinance. So once that is complete, then I'll formalize a letter and I'll make sure you folks know what the date structure looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Colette, any more reports? Do we want to move towards the?
Well, I just wanted to see if the township attorney had anything to say. Because he had a report.
Thank you.
Okay, so now that we have no reports, we are going to be moving right along under the ordinances for discussion. At this time, there is a consultant named Robert who will be also joining this discussion. So with that being said, I would like to open the floor up to the panelists, the council, and to Rob.
Brian, is Rob in the meeting?
I'm in the meeting. Hi, everyone.
Rob, Keith Kazmark. I just want to introduce Rob. Rob has been our point of contact with the Willcotts firm, who we engaged in co-keting ideas a month ago in order to facilitate the creation of a report when it comes to the finances and our rate structure moving forward. As I pointed out in my July 1 memo to the council, we have not raised rates with regard to sewer and water since 2007 and 2006, respectively. And at this point, Rob will walk you through the analysis that he and his colleagues have done for the township to talk a little bit about what we need the rate structure to look like moving forward in order to make sure that we don't put the utilities in jeopardy when it comes to the amount of surplus and operating expenses to conduct business with sewer and water. So Rob, I'll turn it over to you, and I would just ask everybody who is not speaking to put themselves on mute because we are receiving feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. So we were approached by the township with the issue that both the water and sewer fund were significantly losing funds and depleting year by year. And they, of course, they asked us to come in, take a look at these funds, take a look at the existing rate structure. What we found is that the cause of this rapid depletion on both sides is, it was twofold. We saw that the operating costs, year to year, were increasing anywhere between 6% to 8% over the past number, past five years. However, the, the water rates had remained fairly static. Additionally, we were transferring funds annually from the both the water and sewer funds to help fund the current fund budget. The result, how we see it, is we are on path to have these, have both funds nearly or completely depleted by either sometime next year or the year after, the following year. What we, what we did is we prepared two rate study reports, and we're proposing a, an initial 39% increase in 2020 to both the water and sewer rates, followed by annual increases ranging from 5% to 8% in the four-year period that follows. Yeah, these rate increases are, what we're projecting, they will be able to fund our escalating cost of operations, our debt service obligations, as well as capital projects, and in the short term, transfers to the township for, to, until, until the current fund can be balanced on its own. The, the proposed rate increase would affect the average residential water and sewer customer. On the water, by, on the water side, it would be about a $15.73 increase per quarter. On the sewer side, it'd be about a $33.22 increase per quarter. I will point out again, these water rates, the water rates haven't been increased since 2007. The sewer rates were last updated in 2006. This, this increase that we're talking about for the initial one is, is about the equivalent of if we were to had raised rates about 2% to 2.5% every year, you know, from 2006 to 2007. This is about the equivalent of that, but unfortunately, we're in the position right now where we're playing a lot of catch, we're playing catch-up. The, now, what we did is we also compared the, this proposed 2020 rates to other local municipalities in the area. Now, the, on the water side, we're, we're still very low compared to our neighboring towns. Out of the selection that I picked, I think we were still the third lowest. On the sewer side, we fell pretty much in the lower half of, of the, the sample that I picked. And, and this is, so what we're proposing is, you know, is still on the low side compared to our neighboring towns. That is, that's the synopsis of the reports that we presented to the township. Are there any questions from the board that I can help answer as far as the reports or the recommendations?
Uh, yeah. Rob?
Yes.
Uh, this is Councilman Carriffi. The numbers you gave us at the beginning, when you took about a 39% increase right off the bat and then 6% to 8% over the next five years. So that would mean theoretically, it would, it could be a, potentially a 79% increase over the next five years.
So we're doing, yeah, so I, what we're, I guess, when you're talking about the, the overall at the end of, at the end of the five-year period?
Yes.
I, I believe so. I haven't run those, I haven't run that, that overall figure, but, you know, certainly, we certainly would need to get, yeah, get there to catch up.
Yeah, you had 39% right away, and then 6% to 8% for five years, so.
Yes.
The top, 8% times 5 would be 40%, so that would be a total of 79% increase in five years.
And again, certainly, I can, I can run those figures. That's. And we'll do so now.
This is a council member, Peterson. Do you have a dollar value that that translates to, to the average household over the course of the year?
I do. Well, no, I'm sorry, by quarter. Uh, yes.
Could I just ask that you turn down the volume just for getting some feedback? Maybe just a tad bit?
I, I, is this, I, I'm sorry, Keith, are you talking?
Yeah, that's good. That's better, just because I guess we're getting feedback, and I think it's coming from your mic. So if we can just ask you to turn it down just a tad bit.
All right, we'll do.
Thank you, Rob. I appreciate that.
No problem. Is that, is that a bit better, everyone?
That's much better.
Okay, all right. So for the average, for the average user, you'd be looking at a total bill on the water side of $168. On the sewer side, you'd be looking at $473 per year. So the annual increase is, is going to be for this initial 2020 year, well, annualized, it's a $195 increase, but we're only initially talking for, you know, it would affect these, the first half of the year. So really, for this year, it'd be $97, $98 for your average, your, the average household.
Captain, woman Grignani?
Yes.
In your proposal that you, that we received on discussion points?
Yes.
You have an average quarterly bill of $40.33.
Correct, for, currently for water, yes.
Okay, and you're asking for a residential quarterly average change of $15.73, which comes to a total of $56.06.
Correct.
Times four comes to $224.24.
Let's see. I, so the 1573 and the 3322 is 195.
I'm not talking, sir, I'm not talking about the $33. I'm talking about the water bill specifically. You're telling the average of $40.33 plus the $15.73 comes out to $56.06 times four for the year is $224.24.
That's correct, yes.
All right, plus the $473 for sewer comes out to $697.84 a resident for the year. Am I reading those numbers correctly, sir?
Those are, that is correct.
Okay, now, make mention of the ordinance. The ordinance for the sewer has a single-family and multifamily residential dwelling, $71 per quarter. So what are we talking about, $71 or $33.22?
Yeah, so, so what we're discussing, the, the difference, I, what, the figures that you're looking in, in the, the presentation is based on the average bill for, yeah, for the average water user. So that would include not only residential, but also it averages in apartments. This would be the average, the average household.
Okay, but what is, is the figure $33.22 or $71 that is in our, that's in our ordinance?
I apologize, I'm just scrolling down on the ordinance here.
Okay, it's on page two. It's on page two, and it's got section one, the third, the third, the third.
Now, would this be something maybe we could bring up on the, on the screen? I apologize.
Let me, let me read that to you, please.
Sure.
It's section one, chapter 329.
We're going to bring it up on the screen right now.
Fine.
I just want to, we'll, we'll bring it up, and then once it's up, we'll go ahead and. Give us just one moment while we transition here. Okay, here it is. There it is. At this point, if you can just point out to where, what portions should we bring it up for, for Rob to look at?
It's in our ordinance. Our ordinance for the sewer, and it's section one.
Oh, yes, so I, yeah.
Section one, paragraph three. Single-family and multifamily residential dwelling, $71 per quarter. You just mentioned $33.22, so which one is it?
Well, the $33.22 is the, the change in the average billing. So the average billing for sewer, even though we're proposing having the rate increase to $71 per a single user, for a single-family user, the average user under this would be, would be paying about $118 per quarter. And some of that has to do with, you know, different, different amounts of usage on this. Yeah, again, we're basing that on average. That $33.22 is actually just the change in the average between the, the previous average on the quarterly bill versus the, the proposed average.
Well, that, I still don't know, I'm, I'm still not following you, okay? But then the other thing I want to mention is if we go over our usage on water and sewer, there are going to be additional charges. How much are we actually charging our residents? They could be paying a substantial amount more than what they're paying now. I understand the rates have to be raised, but this is ludicrous, the amount that is being asked for right now. Okay, why wasn't, if we knew this was happening, why didn't the administration increase our sewer over a period of these past three years? Plus, this survey was done, or this study was done in March, why are we just getting it now in July?
Councilman, if I may, through the, through the council president, and I'm getting a little feedback, so I hope you can hear me. First of all, I'll just call the council's attention to the fact that last year the administration did recommend a 2% increase in both water and sewer, understanding the structure of last year. And speaking candidly, you know, with the fact that, you know, there was a municipal election to be held in November, we went with a 2% recommendation that was not pursued. I can't speak to what happened prior to my arrival here in October of 2018, but the issue with regard to the rates is a seriously pressing issue. And every month that goes by, we run with changing, having a shortfall in water and sewer in 2021. There was a memo that was issued to the council last year that projected a shortfall arriving somewhere in 2023 or 2024. And this report, which is much more comprehensive than the memo that was written last year, projects that to be even sooner. With regard to the timing of the report being provided to council, that was my decision. One, we were in the midst of the COVID-19 public health crisis, which became the priority above everything else that was happening in the township. And secondly, I quite frankly did not want to make this report public until the budget was approved because I was concerned about the public receiving both the budget information and the water and sewer information simultaneously. And that's, you know, this is a public meeting, so I have no problem saying that that was my decision as far as when to present this information to both the governing body and also to the, to the public at large.
Councilwoman, the council member, Janice McCarthy, I don't think this should come as a surprise to anyone because we've been talking about this for the past three years. And, you know, I remember we had a meeting with Ms. Zavaccia early, I think in my first year on council, and he pointed out this issue when we discussed the sewer rates. So, you know, I don't think this should be a surprise to anyone.
If I may add, Rob, I, I gave you those numbers at the beginning that it potentially could be a 79% increase over five years.
Yes.
I just did some quick math, and if you compound those percentages over five years, the increase comes to over 104%. I think that's, that's absurd to increase water and sewer over 104% over a five-year period. That's, you know, to me, that's just, that's crazy.
Can I speak? That's not, that's not what's happening. What's happening is we're paying what we should have been paying all along. So it's a bitter pill to swallow now, but it's not as though like a rational budget keeper in a household who had some foresight may have thought, this bubble's going to burst, I should put aside some cash for when these rates go up. Now, most people don't do that, myself included, because they're not sufficiently responsible or whatever the reason is, we're trying to live our lives. It doesn't make it less of a reality that without intense action, the fund will be empty. And so we can look at it on a micro level of how this impacts everybody from the dollars and cents over a period of time, but the macro vision here is we're going to be out of money. And maybe it's worth outlining a little bit of what does it look like when there's no money?
Well, and again, council, council member McCarthy, you know, I think it was early this year that, you know, I pointed out in a discussion that fiscal policies, down fiscal policies generate sufficient revenue through taxes and fees and grants. And Parsippany, on the other hand, was operating financially. And instead of raising sufficient revenue for expenses and taxes, we relied on utility surplus and consistently increasing the amount of the surplus without raising the fees. Matter of fact, I think 2010, where fees were lower. That's just not sustainable.
I'm sorry, Jen, I need somebody to be muted. Everybody, please be muted because when she's speaking, we're getting feedback. I apologize to cut you off, Janice. Please, everybody mute your microphones when you're not speaking so we don't get the feedback.
Well, okay, so just to repeat, I said that when you generate sufficient revenues, you generate them through taxes, grants, and fees, and that didn't happen. And that didn't happen for like six or seven years, you know? So we were operating using the sewer surplus and transferring increasing amount of funds to the operate, to the current fund. And that's what we did. So as Emily pointed out, that's not sustainable. And it, it comes to fruition now. You know, it's like, it's like a debt, your credit card debt. When you borrow and borrow and borrow, at some point, you have to pay that back. And unfortunately, now we have to pay it back, so we have to make some hard decisions. I guess, and if we're not willing to do that, then, then the fund will be depleted.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, if I can just get a little history here. Prior to upgrading the sewer treatment plant, the rates we had were based on a electric bill that was 75% greater than it is now. So the rates were, that we were charging were covering a huge expense in electric, electricity. When we upgraded the sewer treatment plant and significantly reduced our electric bill, we had, what we were charging in the sewer rate was. we had, we, what we were charging in the sewer rate was higher than we needed to operate the sewer plant. We decided to give that back to the residents by shifting some of it over to the current fund, never to exceed the, the project fund balance. And that was the, that was the rule that we used for many years, not to exceed the fund balance, so we could recoup whatever we transferred in the following year. We had a surplus. That would benefit the Parsippany taxpayers. If we simply reduced the rate at that point in time, because our rate was higher than the cost at that time, then we would also be reducing the rate for all the commercial properties and all the townships that we have, that we, that use our sewer treatment plant. Rather than give it to the commercial properties and, and the other towns, by transferring some of that into our current fund, we benefited, directly benefited the Parsippany taxpayers and not the others. That worked fine for a few years, okay? But we could never, we should never exceed the fund balance in any utility. And, and that's the rule that we broke that got us into trouble, I believe.
I'd like to talk here for a second. The other thing that happened was that the usage had started to drop off as well, okay? So, that is like a double whammy. Not only weren't the rates high enough, but the usage started dropping down for efficiencies and things like that. And for the sewer plant and the water, we ended up taking on more ordinance and, and capital and debt because of the failing water system. I mean, that's just on the water side. So, it's, it's like the perfect storm coming together. And the problem is that we need to do something quickly, because your, your fund balance right now has, has dropped significantly, and we don't wanna have a problem in twenty-one and going forward, just like Emily was talking about. In the past, that, I believe that we weren't spending the mu, the money as we needed to be on the capital projects. And with the new regime that had come in with Joe Beckmeyer and, and, and Waworka, they started really doing a lot of new things, and the, and COA hasn't helped it either. We had to do, as you know, how many ordinances did we pass last year to fix the wells? Okay, so, my, it's, it's a whole combination of things. And, and this has to happen. I, I, you know, it sounds big, it sounds bad, but I have to tell you, we're still on the very bottom of the list in the, and the, and the county in terms of our rates. Not that we wanna raise them that high, and it sounds terrible, but it's still a really good deal, okay? And I, I encourage you to do this. And I know it sounds bad, but you have to do this for your residents, for the residents.
Through your President, if I may, to, to Councilman Karifi's point, and, and I understand that this may seem drastic all at once, but as I started off the presentation this afternoon, rates have not been adjusted since two thousand and six. And to the Council President's point, when it came to sewer, they were actually last adjusted downward, not upward. And if you would have, and listen, we, we can't go, we can't turn back the hands of time, I appreciate that. However, if, similar to the municipal budget, you kept on a two percent trajectory over those fourteen years where the, where the rates remained static, you would have been adjusting the rates by approximately two point seven percent per year. Had that been done over the last fourteen years, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And unfortunately, by not making those adjustments, and I'm not trying to be critical of anybody here, I don't know how much this was even talked about over that, you know, decade and a half, so to speak. But had that been done and kept on pace, you would not have to have, you would not have to make this critical decision that's before you tonight with the report from the Woolcotts firm. So, I, I just wanna point out that, you know, this is a compounding issue. The municipal budget, you know, separate and apart from the utilities, you know, it's good fiscal practice in New Jersey to stick to that two percent cap, that limitation, so that your cap doesn't get restricted if you lowered the increase by less than two percent, because that's the effect that the, that the law has. The same can be applied to the, to sewer and water rates. You know, your contractual obligations to your employees, which are paid exclusively through these utility funds, exceed the two percent cap. They exceed the two percent cap for, for blue collar, based on the guide that the Council approved in order to, and the administration negotiated, in order to compensate the, the rank-and-file blue collar employees. And we settled that slightly over two percent for the supervisors across the board, including those at sewer and water. So, just in your employee costs are going up more than two percent, yet the rates have stayed stagnant, you know, for, for nearly fifteen years. So I just wanna point that out for.
Can I make a suggestion, if it's possible? I mean, I, I get all of that. Is it possible, especially this year in particular with the, the virus and the pandemic and everything going on, is it possible to reach the end goal? But instead of such a major increase right off the bat, maybe spreading it out over seven or eight years, but still reaching the goal over that time, but not just such a, a dramatic hit right off the bat?
Rob, what's your analysis of that?
Unfortunately, I, no. And this is something, you, you notice that we, we did the thirty-nine percent increase, but, and then we, we still have somewhat larger increases for the following years, you know, five percent, you know, ranging between five to, five to eight percent. We tried a number of scenarios here. The issue is that we're, I, I think if we had this conversation last year, that would have been, that would have been a real possibility of, of spreading out this hit a bit more. How we saw is that twenty twenty-one, we're in, we're in a very critical area, which, you know, really is just, it's six months away. So, that's unfortunately, the, the answer is, I, I don't believe so, no. We, we did not, we, we thought thirty-nine percent was pretty much the lowest that we could do to meet, to meet these obligations going for next year.
I was gonna ask the same kind of question, but a different way from Paul. If you have a pie, there are different ways you can cut the pie to reach a hundred percent of the pie eventually. So, my question would have been, instead of a thirty-nine percent increase now, a twenty percent increase with a six or seven or eight percent the following year, cut the pie up differently, so it's not a big amount to choke everybody this first year.
I would make the case that the pie hasn't been cut for fourteen years. That's the benefit. No one had to take any cuts for fourteen years. I'm not saying that this isn't an intense thing, but let's not, I, I just wanna stress, we cannot isolate this in time. No one took an increase for fourteen years.
Yeah, and I, I think the, in, in any other situation, you would have other mechanisms. You know, another mechanism would be maybe borrowing from the, the current fund. But I, I don't, I think my understanding is that a lot of these options have been exhausted. You know, right now, our current fund is borrowing from these, or, or being funded through these utilities. So I'm not sure if, I'm, I'm not sure if we have that option.
We do not have that.
Okay. Do, if we have no one else from the Council Administration that wants to comment, then I'm going to go ahead and go and move on to the public portion of the meeting.
Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Look, it, it, oh, I'm sorry. Janice, do you wanna speak first, and then I'll, I'll speak? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Janice, she could tell us what the fund bill and balance is now? Is there, is there anything left?
Well, here's the thing. What happened because the increase in costs in the water and the sewer operating, to just fund the water and the sewer operating budgets, forget about the current fund, we needed to use much, much more of, of their individual fund balance. For example, this year in the water, we needed to use two point three million savings to be able to just stay alive in the water, okay? To be balanced in the water fund. And the sewer fund, which we used to just use a million or a million and a half, this year, just to get through, we had to use three point three six six million. So you can see what's happening. Forget about the current fund. In the sewer fund itself, in the water, they, the rates that you have right now are not enough to fund and take care of the operating of just the utility. And on top of that now, if you're going to fund the current, you're, you're pretty much have exhausted almost all the fund balance. And, and I'm not sure, if you don't do this, and especially because we're six months through already, we're six months through the year. This calculation that Rob did and we worked on was calculated based on a full year, if I'm not mistaken. So, I, I, I get it with, that it sounds like a lot, and it, and it feels like we're at critical mass, like, like Emily spoke about.
And I'm sorry, yeah, and just one, one correction there.
Rob, continue, I'm sorry. I need everybody who is not speaking to mute themselves. Jim, also, I need, I need you to be on mute, and I think everybody else is on mute as well. But if you can, please mute yourselves when you're not speaking, because then we get feedback. Go ahead, Rob, I'm sorry.
Again, and, and I'm sorry, just a quick correction. This, this study was based, calculated on the assumption where that the, the twenty twenty rates were, this is based on a six-month assumption. So it's something that if we do, if the, the township decides to adopt these new rates, the projection was done considering that it would be done just for these six months for the year. So it's, it, it is, it's not a full year, it is just a half year for that first twenty twenty year.
I realize that. However, I just, you know, when I, when we talked about the calculation, how much of that's going to regenerate our fund balance, Rob? That's all I was trying to say.
No, very true, very true.
You know, and I think another issue, Ann, if I'm not mistaken, is, you know, we, we increased, or we, we had more debt because we didn't have, we couldn't use those surpluses in the sewer fund. So, you know, it's sort of like, there's a chart, there's, you know, more expense there too for the taxpayer to pay off the, the debt, right?
Using the credit card instead of cash, right, Janice?
Right, right.
Well, I think also that our new Beckmeyer, Joe Beckmeyer's been doing a lot of good projects up there that needed to be done for many, many years up at the sewer plant. There were a lot of great ideas, and none of those were happening. And then when Joe got there, they started really doing these, these improvements and things that needed to be done on a maintenance level. And on the water side, you have the other problem, that you know the wells are dry, dried up, and we're regenerating those and trying to get ready for COA. So, all of this, it makes a difference. And yeah, you do, we can't fund it through fund balance, we have to fund it through debt. And ideally, over time, we would like to pay for some of these things through, through operating, but right now, that's not happening. So yes, we have incurred more debt, and we will for the next few years.
Anyone else?
Yes. Now, again, like, like I had alluded to, and the way Councilman, Councilmember McCarthy was, was saying, that we've basically been using the credit card instead of paying cash on this, as it were, and to be, keep it in very simple household, household terms. And paying, paying it off and paying interest on, you know, capital projects that we've had to do, instead of just paying it straight out with cash, is costing us money in the long run. And that's something that has concerned me from the beginning. But just on another thing, this is, I, I, I get Paul's, Councilman Karifi's hesitancy, because this is, this is a tough pill to swallow. And I, I see that. I, I feel it too, but just understand, at least the way I see it. I mean, it's, it's, it's easy to do the popular thing. You know, the, the, the thing that'll, you know, make everyone go hip, hip, hooray, but it's, it's harder, in this case, to do the right thing. It's, this is going to be hard for us as leaders, as elected officials here. This is going to be rough to do, and I understand that. But just because it's the hard thing to do does not mean it's not the right thing to do. So, keep asking your questions, let's, let's go back and look at this. Okay, we have some tough decisions to make, and I am sensitive to the fact that all five of us, and my, me included, being six, have a very tough decision to make on this, and.
What is there to go back and be looked at?
We need to do the right thing. No, meaning like the, the, before you vote.
Okay, anybody else for a discussion? Okay, seeing that there's no one else for discussion, we are now going to move to the public portion of this meeting. So, before we start the public portion, just wanna alert the public that in the bottom, you, you will have a raise hand icon, you raise your hand. Once I see you, you will be unmuted, you will have five minutes to speak. Please be advised, before you begin speaking, you need to give your name and address. If you do not give your name and address, you will be cut off. With that being said, I now would like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion, second, Peterson.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'm opening the floor up to the public. Please, once you raise your hand, and we, and we see that your hand is raised, you will be unmuted and given five minutes to speak. Okay, at this point, I have a Mr. Richard, I believe, Young it is. We will go ahead and unmute you, and Mr. Richard Young, you're unmuted now, you can go ahead and speak. Please identify your name and address.
My name is Richard Young, I live at one seventy-nine Intervale Road in Parsippany. I'd like to thank you all for your service and recognize the difficulty of what is before you. As the mayor was saying a little bit ago, it is hard to do the right thing. And I think the situation that you see before you is the result of people not doing the right thing for a very long period of time. Clearly, one of the ways that we as citizens were reassured that the township budget was kept in balance now appears to be that funds were siphoned off from the water and sewer utility. So perhaps the focus of this needs to be turned back around to the township and to where elsewhere in the township budget that funds can be transferred back to the water and sewer utilities, not siphoned out of the pockets of the taxpayers, especially at the rate that's being suggested here. A thirty-nine percent increase over one year in a meeting that's held at four o'clock on a business day is a little unconscionable. I think the timing of this doesn't really complement the high level of accomplishment and of attitude that we would expect from our town council. Not really very good to put us out this way. I think, as Mr. Karifi was trying to say, we are in the middle of a pandemic, and the economic impact on many of us has been beyond meaningful. Having something as ridiculous as a thirty-nine percent increase because somebody didn't recognize this problem and work it through the years is unconscionable. I believe you should consider those points as you look at it. I think also you should work a bit more closely, or have the appropriate supervisors within the water and sewer department look a bit more closely at things that really are crises and require capital investment at this time, as opposed to things that can be stretched out in time or renegotiated. I'd appreciate your care as you look forward at this. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Young. Do we have anyone else that is, would like to speak during the public portion? I haven't seen any raised hands yet, I will wait just a few seconds to see if anyone would like to speak.
Can I just say, in response to Mr. Young's question, I'm, I'm not sure that this is the result of not recognizing that this was a problem. For as long as I have been serving here, I have heard this is gonna be a problem, this is gonna be a problem, this is gonna be a problem. And now here we are with the problem. I can't account for the decade plus prior to my arrival, but I'm, I don't think that it was naivety that led us to this point.
Okay, do we have any other member from the public? I don't see any member raising their hand. So, at this time, seeing no one else from the public, I would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second, Peterson.
Okay, I need, I have a motion from Mr. Karifi, seconded from Ms. McCarthy. A roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
The floor is closed. So at this time, we are now going to move into the executive session, where we're going to be discussing personnel matters related to the finance department. I want to let the public know that there is going to be no action to be taken. We will not be seen or heard at the time we go into executive session. However, we will come back out into the public to adjourn, but I do want to let the public know that no action will be taken after the executive session. Thank you for your attendance and your comments. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution for the. Yes.
I just want to say thank you to everyone. I'm going to step off, and I feel the same way Keith does, to thank you all for everything. It's been a real pleasure to work with everyone. And I am also going to be here for any transition. I encourage you to be open to the person who you're going to speak to. He's a very good friend of mine as well, and I look forward to, if, if it's acceptable, of course, to you, I look forward to working with him, similar to what Keith's going to do, as for as long as it takes. So I'm going to stop, drop off, and have a good night, everybody.
Bye, Ann.
All right, thank you, Ann.
Bye, Ann.
This is Rob McNich. Take care, everyone, I'm going to drop off as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the. All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and read the executive session resolution now, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act PL nineteen seventy-five, chapter thirty-one permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the township council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the township council wishes to discuss personnel matters related to the finance department, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once there matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes will be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the township council, the township Parsippany Troy's Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. I need a motion to adjourn into public session and take it into closed session.
Motion, Peterson.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, we're now going to go ahead and to go into executive session. You guys stay signed on, we're going to put you into executive session.
You're on mute.
Sorry, I apologize. We're now back to open session, we now need a motion to reconvene to open session, please.
Second, Laura.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro? Mr. DePiro? Mr. DePiro? Okay, seems like we might have technical difficulties with Mr. DePiro, but we have four votes to go into open session. Okay, being that we're in open session, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
DePiro? Okay, Mr. DePiro, it seems like we're having technical difficulties, but we do have the four votes, we have a quorum to adjourn, so I'm going to wish everyone a good night, and we will touch base later on.
Thank you. Glad. Glad.
Here's Michael.
Can I, I, can you, can I, are you, I have a question?
Yeah, I'll call you right now.
Okay, thanks.
All right, have a good night, everyone.